All our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you do the roll call, please.
Ettinger? Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Tonight, we have our invocation by Pastor Jim Williams of the Emmanuel Baptist Church. Would please rise.
Thank you for this opportunity. Will you bow your heads as we pray? Heavenly Father, I come to you tonight, Lord, to thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here for your many and abundant blessings that you pour out on each and every one of us, for the blessings and the freedom you provide this nation, Father. And God, I just come to you. Your word says, "We, as citizens, ought to obey the governing authorities that you have established, Father, because they've been established to promote peace, order, and justice, Father." And therefore, I pray for our mayor. I pray for the various levels of civil officials here tonight, particularly for the assembled council. Father, asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, Father, that you would just give them discernment and wisdom, Lord, and confidence in what is good and fitting and best for this beloved city of Coeur d'Alene, Father. It's in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Don't believe we do. We move on to a presentation. Tree Maintenance Cost Sharing Program. We have Katie Kosenki from the Urban Forestry, the Urban Forestry Coordinator, who's going to give us a presentation. Welcome, Katie.
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for having me here tonight to talk with you about this program proposal. All right. Again, this is the Tree Maintenance Cost Share Program proposal. And before I talk with you about the program, I do want to note that the 2030 Vision Plan identified some specific urban forestry goals, and that included identifying the urban forest as a public infrastructure asset and to also give the city authority and funding to provide proper care and maintenance of trees within the public right-of-way areas. And the program I'm going to propose doesn't accomplish this completely. However, it is certainly a step in the right direction. Before I tell you about the program, I want to talk with you a little bit about the current program of care. Currently, abutting property owners are responsible for all of the care and maintenance of trees within the public right-of-way areas, and that includes any maintenance, tree pruning, things like that, and also tree removal, which is sometimes necessary in the case of dead or dying trees. The city does provide some assistance through various ways, including a street tree permit system, providing advice and technical information to abutting property owners if the work is something that they may be able to do themselves. We also have tree service licensing, which assures quality that the tree services are familiar with our ordinances, they carry adequate insurance, and are current on industry standards in regards to tree care. We also do a periodic review of street tree health and condition through inventory data collection. And we field and review complaints, and those are in regards to tree health concerns, street clearance, traffic sign visibility, and we work with abutting property owners for compliance and getting those things accomplished. The city has provided some assistance with clearance pruning over the past few years as a great partnership with the Parks and Street Departments. We've identified some neighborhoods that have hundreds of trees with low clearance, and it would be very difficult to contact each and every one of those people. And so anyhow, we've partnered to help prune some trees in those areas for clearance only as time allows between plowing and other projects and things like that. And now on to the proposed program overview. It's somewhat similar to the sidewalk reimbursement plan, and just as with the trees, the abutting property owners are responsible for their sidewalks as well. And in an effort to assist abutting property owners in promoting those sidewalk repairs, they allow for reimbursement of a certain amount for repairing the sidewalk. So it's somewhat similar in the fact that for doing needed tree work, they could get up to a certain amount of funds back. And the goal of the program is to assist abutting property owners with tree maintenance tasks, and sometimes those tasks are required. And that is in the case of low clearance, vision obstructions at corners, and hazard trees, such as the case of dead or dying trees, or trees that have broken limbs, or, you know, hazard tree parts that are caught up in the crown of the tree that need to be removed before they fall out. The cost share program proposes to give up to 50%, up to 200 for pruning per tree, 50% up to 400 for removals. And again, those are approved removals of trees that are in poor condition with a maximum of $600 per property, and that's within a 36-month time period. And the properties must be residential, as the funds for the program are generated with residential street tree fees from building permits, which I'll tell you a little bit more about here. And so on to the financial analysis. It's proposed to use current street tree funds for the program. No other funds would need to be dedicated to the program. The funds are currently generated when building permits are issued. There's a fee for a street tree, and at the time of the certificate of occupancy, the contractor can plant a tree and get the refund back, or within six months, the abutting property owner can do so. However, in some cases, they're choosing not to plant, and that's where we're getting the forfeited fees. And the funds are currently used by the Urban Forestry Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. We plant anywhere from 100 to 200 trees per year, and the preferred locations for those trees are the exact places where the funds were forfeited. And since the program has been in place in nine years, we've planted about 1,200 street trees, and then the contractors and abutting property owners have planted 1,600 and gotten the reimbursements back. So the priority of the use of the funds will stay for planting, because that's what they're primarily for. However, there have been some excess funds, and that's what's going to be used for this program if approved. And this program proposes to use up to $20,000 per year. Each year, the available funds will be determined. The account may not be secure for lots and lots of years of future funding. For example, if all of the refunds are given back, or if residential building slows down, there'll be less coming in, or if all of the funds are dedicated, you know, to planting, then there would be less or possibly no funds. However, at this time, we predict we have about five years' worth of funds, as it is now, to sustain the program. And the ordinance does specify that this account can be used for maintenance and acquisition of street trees. And there are several program steps to this process, which you should have a copy of that application in your packet. There is a pre-work inspection, and that's just to ensure that the trees are within the public right-of-way, which varies street for street, and sometimes that's hard to tell if there aren't sidewalks, and that the proposed maintenance work is justified. And they also need to have an estimate by a city-licensed tree service. Those are the tree services that are authorized to work on public trees and are familiar with our ordinances and the current standards. And there are currently 12 city-licensed tree services, and all of them give free estimates. And then after it's approved, the work can be done, and then afterwards, the abutting property owner can submit a paid invoice, and we'll do a quick inspection just to be sure that the work was done as they outlined in their application, and then a refund can be given. Our current street tree inventory helps to give an idea of some of the work that's out there that needs to be done on public trees. We currently have over 21,000 street trees in the public right-of-ways, and there are over 1,600 identified as needing crown cleaning, and that's, you know, dead or dying or broken branches that should be pruned out versus coming out in snowstorms and things which can cause further health issues for trees rather than being just pruned off correctly now. There are over 500 that have low branches over the street, that have low clearance. However, that number is likely much higher. And there are lots of young trees that are under 15 inches in diameter, a good portion of our trees, that could use some formative or structural pruning just to get them off to a good start by eliminating and pruning out double leaders and, you know, establishing good branch spacing and things like that. You can prevent future problems from happening if you do that preventative maintenance work now. And there are 68 that are over 5 inches in diameter that are listed in poor condition needing removal. Luckily, because we received a stimulus grant in 2010, that number is much lower than it used to be. We were able to assist in removing a large number of very poor-conditioned hazardous trees street-side. And now on to the importance of maintaining trees. Public safety is number one. All of our city's street trees are located next to our public streets and sidewalks, bike lanes, and those are all frequently used. Trees that are maintained have a lower risk of failure because, you know, the dead-broiled wood is eliminated, and they have better structure is established. Trees that are healthy also live longer and provide more benefits. And I cut this down a lot because I went quite a bit in depth in this before, but just to touch on those, there are lots of environmental benefits. Those are the things that, like, improving air quality, intercepting dust particles, cooling effects, and reducing filtering stormwater runoff, and much more. There are also lots of economic benefits of trees, including energy conservation. You don't have to run your air conditioner all summer long if your house is shaded. Shaded streets actually last longer. They don't, the pavement doesn't break down as quickly. They also increase property values. And then stormwater mitigation, I've also listed as an economic benefit because they mitigate significant amounts of stormwater. And the more trees we have, the fewer facilities need to be built to mitigate stormwater runoff. And just a real quick fact, according to 2009 Green, City Green Report, which the Idaho Department of Lands did over the Rathron Prairie Aquifer, they identified the Coeur d'Alene area and all of the trees, including private property and public trees. They put a dollar value to the amount of stormwater they mitigate per year, and that savings they reported was $991,000, and that was just on stormwater savings alone. And then there's lots of social benefits of trees. You have the nice aesthetics and the sense of place and calming effect and buffering noises and giving a little privacy. And there are also studies about how trees can calm and slow traffic and also reduce crime rates in some areas. Just kind of some interesting things. So just in summary, the benefits of the program would include public safety, another opportunity to educate the public about the importance of tree care, also provide assistance in caring for the trees that are within the public right-of-way, and assisting in compliance in those cases where people are required to do some of those tree maintenance tasks. Promoting tree care and then healthier trees provide more benefits and for longer. And any questions?
Any questions for Katie?
A couple of them quick. Katie, so we don't, as a city right now, we don't maintain their trees, our trees? Whose trees are they, again?
They're public trees. They belong to everybody. But they are within the public or city right-of-way, so you could call them city or public trees. And just since the ordinance was established in 1985, instead of the city, you know, having a tree crew, each person's just responsible for the portion that abut their properties.
So you just said that magic word, "tree crew." How come we don't just take care of those trees?
Money, I think.
Are you trying to get there, do you think? I mean, this is sort of a step in kind of that direction you're paying for.
Yeah, that's actually, that is the ultimate goal of the Urban Forestry Committee and, you know, was identified as, from numerous members of the community through the 2030 visioning, planning process.
Okay. I love listening to you talk about trees. You're such a tree hugger, isn't you? In a positive way, of course. It's all these invisible things you can remember, huh?
Yeah.
I like that economic impact. And, you know, it's just, they're pretty. They're sometimes pretty.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dan? Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Katie. You know, I'm a big fan of trees, too, and I asked that question. We had a workshop a couple of years back, and I asked why we don't do that, because it seems to me, you know, as a homeowner, my street trees, I'm going to get those maintained on a regular basis, and it costs me money to do it. And some people don't, some people do. It's a good thing. In fact, last year, I replaced two of my trees, because you guys came out, you looked at them, and you said that one of them was bad. You're making a face. You're going, "Yee." Because they were, they were bad.
No, they had, yeah, some significant cavities. We were surprised they were still standing.
Yeah, so you're like a dentist. So you go to the tree and...
Technical talk.
...cavities. And so I tore them down at my own expense, and I planted two new trees at my own expense. So just a hypothetical situation that some city councilman somewhere, like, is spending $1,000 on street trees. What would this program do?
This program that we're proposing today would give you back up to $200, or, excuse me, if, for example, you did removals. So...
$300 each.
$300 each. So it was 50% up to 400 per tree for tree removals. So you would get 150 back per tree, so you'd get 300 of that back.
Sweet. And that's, and, but not, but I won't now. Are you looking at your money bag?
Yeah. But I'm sure the Urban Forestry Committee would love to sit down and talk with you about all their ideas about how we could just do it all. And that could be $1 a month, we, I mean, from everybody. I mean, that goes a long way.
That goes into, I wrote some notes here. So these are residential trees. Does this also apply to subdivisions, too? So when someone does the forfeiture, the tree, the street tree fund, and someone's building a new house, you said a residential. So would that apply to a subdivision if someone's putting in 50 houses? Do they have to pay for 50 equivalent street trees?
Such as, like, the homeowners' areas and things like that?
No, I mean, we just put in a subdivision somewhere, and they're building 150 houses. Do they have to pay? So that goes into this fund as well?
Yeah, yeah. Each residential permit, when they get that permit for that house, they'll pay $300 for a street tree, which they can get back once they plant it. But there's a couple of contractors that say, "I'd just rather not plant. You do it for me." And, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort, but we can, if we plant 200 trees at a time, we can stretch those funds a little bit more than, say, if we're just planting, like, 30 at a time.
Is that part of this program, then?
Yeah, and that's the primary use of the funds, is for planting. But there has been kind of just a little bit of excess each year that has kind of carried over in the nine years that has built up a bit.
We have rules about our trees, because they are our trees. They're a community. I mean, it's not the city doesn't own them, all the people do.
Yeah.
So if someone knocks down a tree, what happens? Accidentally or on purposely? I mean, do we have a fine, then, right?
Yeah, it is. It can be a misdemeanor. That's what it's identified in our city ordinance. They're also required to replace the tree.
Do they?
In most cases, they do. And if it's a case someone runs off the road and hits a tree, which has been happening a lot lately, well, we can receive restitution for that, especially if they have insurance.
Okay, that's good to know, because I like the trees. I consider myself a tree hugger, too. Would, I've probably planted five or six trees since I've moved into my house. I think they're great.
Any other questions for Katie?
One quick one. Kiki?
So Katie, I think you said that there are 12 licensed city tree removal, are they arborists people, that can be involved in this program? And is that how the public is going to be able to find out about this program primarily?
Yeah, I mean, the tree services will certainly be a good outlet for getting the information out, but, you know, any time that I contact someone, for example, if there's a hazardous tree street-side, you know, I have to contact them and to tell them, "You're the abutting property owner. You're responsible for the care and maintenance." Now I can say, "We have this program," and I'm able to give you up to a certain amount back for getting that done if you use a licensed tree service.
Then you can provide them the list of the licensed tree service people.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I just had one question. Katie, sometimes people, property owners, will put in a new garage or shop or something. They need, you know, a new approach, which has a healthy tree. And I know at that workshop Dan had mentioned, we had discussed that, and that, you know, the protocol is to go through the Urban Forestry Committee for, you know, approval or not. Would this still qualify, so removal of a healthy tree that's been approved, is that still going to qualify for the cost share?
It would be, you know, we can't not limit access to properties, so, you know, if you're putting, as long as it's approved by the other departments, I think it still would qualify for the program. I mean, the priority is probably for dead or dying trees, but certainly, we didn't, there aren't a whole lot of those cases, so we figure that it could be included.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Katie.
Thank you very much.
Renata, are we looking for a vote, then, to adopt this?
That's actually under the consent calendar, so when you approve that, it'll be covered.
There we go. Sweet. So now we will move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council will have three minutes to speak and on city government business, so step on up.
Hi. Tina Johnson, 601 East Front, Coeur d'Alene. I'm here to, I have just a few words about the Four Corners project. I try to stay informed, so I've attended the two meetings on the Four Corners project. One was October the 28th, and another was on November the 3rd, right here in this room. I love the excitement surrounding the immense project, and there are a lot of great ideas that have been presented. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that before the BLM will allow the city to take over the property in the Four Corners project, the city has to come up with a plan for the property that the BLM will approve. While all of the planning thus far has been exciting, I'm here to ask the city council and the city of Coeur d'Alene not to spend one more dollar or one more day on that plan that is necessary to get the BLM's approval. All I expect at this point is a plan that will allow us to take over the property. Do what you have to do to secure the property, but please don't spend any more money or time than is necessary to get a basic plan that the BLM will approve. Thank you.
I do have a question, though. So are you talking about the, because to me, there's two projects. So there's the BLM project, and then there's Four Corners. Are you referring to the difference between the two of them?
The 29 linear acres, basically.
Well, yeah, the BLM piece, the big piece, that we get a lease for a dollar a year, but we have to do a master plan.
Right.
So when you say not to spend a dollar more on the plan, a dollar more on what? Which part of the...
The plan that the city has got to construct and give to the BLM in order for the BLM to relinquish the property to the city. I mean, just make a basic plan that will be good enough for the BLM to give the city, let the city have the property and not go crazy.
I'm with you, but I just want to know how I can help you to see that. Because right now, there's two, what I see as two projects. So you've got your Four Corners, and you've got the BLM thing, but they're all kind of mixed into one big plan. And I'm pretty sure that when we submit that to the BLM, we're just going to give them the BLM part and say, "What do you think?" So is your concern that too much is going, attention is being paid elsewhere?
No, my concern is getting bogged down in the details about where this parking space is or how many parking spaces we need. I mean, and I don't know how specific the plan has to be for the BLM to accept what the city gives them. If the BLM needs something that specific, then do it.
Okay.
But if they don't need something that specific about where the colored concrete's going to go, or two people are going to park here and handicap is there, you know, it seems like the more detail-oriented a plan becomes, the more expensive it becomes. I want to get the property for this, I mean, I want the city to get the property, and let's just do the minimum we have to do to get the property, secure the property, and then, once it's funded, come up with a great plan.
Good. I appreciate that.
And Tina, I think that, you know, Welsh Comer has been chosen to do that study, and I think that's their intention of getting a plan to submit to BLM. I don't think, there needs to be a certain level of detail of that plan. I wish Phil Boyd was here to be able to explain that, but he's not tonight. But their intention is to provide the detail necessary with their experience in dealing with BLM to allow us to do that. I don't think it's our intention to get down into the nuts and the bolts of all of these details, but there are some details that are required
Right.
in working with BLM.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give a public comment tonight? Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of this consent calendar, including Resolution 15001, which is a bunch of stuff. I'll go through it kind of quickly. Lease agreement with Grace Bible Church. Approval of cost-share program to assist property owners in maintaining trees that we just heard about. Approval request to destroy outdated city admin records. Approval agreement of CBC, oh, man, CDBG, community grant with Trinity Group Homes. Approval of agreement with the same group with Children's Village, and also the North Idaho Violence Prevention Center. Declaration of various water surplus items, Water Department. Approval of purchase of two new utility vehicles from Robidoux Motors. Approval of a contract with Western State's Equipment for the purchase of a Caterpillar IT backhoe and declaration of various low-ferocious demonstration. This is driving me...
So glad you're reading this.
Yeah, you ought to see how big these words are, oh my God. Demonstration pilot facility items from the wastewater department as surplus.
Second?
Anything else you'd like to throw in there?
Can we get those big lights back?
Yeah.
I just want those big lights. Okay, no, I still stand on my second.
So we have a motion and a second any further discussion. Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move on to announcements. Anyone from the city council have an announcement tonight?
Just one.
Kiki?
Just wanted to share with you all that we finished a very lengthy reconciliation meeting this morning on the McHewan Park project, and that there has... this morning on the McHewan Park project, and that there has been about eight months' worth of meetings and conversations going on to make sure that we crossed the Ts and dotted the Is on that. And I believe there will be a very nice presentation within the next three weeks. Jim, are we talking about?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond? Thanks. And to counsel on that, and the release of most of the retention is going out. And I think you'll be pleased with the results of what came out of that meeting.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements?
Oh, I would like to say Happy New Year. And oh, by the way, you, and you, and you. Happy first year on the council, sitting up here.
We made it.
A year ago today.
Yeah, we're still here.
Wow.
These old timers are still here.
Yeah.
Time flies.
I noticed there are a lot of students in the audience. If you could raise your hands. So how many students are here on behalf of their class?
And why?
And then.
Because they have to be, otherwise they wouldn't have shown up.
Raise your hand if you would come here anyway. That's what I like to see. Well, welcome.
End of the semester, last chance.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. So I would, on my announcement, I would like to have a reappointment of Danny Davis to the Lake City Development Corporation.
Second.
I guess we need a motion.
Oh, a motion, yes.
So you moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Dan, you want to have discussion on that?
Didn't even look over at me. He knew I was going to say something. Yes, I will be opposing this appointment. We had a meeting, we had a workshop with LCDC, and we sat in this room and we talked about the fact that we have no control over LCDC, even though the people of Midtown were asking us to do something. The only thing that we can do as members of the council is to appoint, approve appointments by the mayor to the board, and therefore to show my appreciation for what the people in Midtown have done, and I thought they've done a great job, and my disapproval of the way they've been treated by LCDC, I will be denying this appointment.
Any further discussion? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, as I've mentioned on past issues, that, you know, sometimes I'll support things, sometimes I won't. Pick my battles. I went back and forth on the reappointment of Mr. Davis, and I think I've made up my mind that I will probably not support it for a different reason in that Mr. Davis, I believe, has been on the board since the corporation's inception. And so I don't know what the process, it seems like it's just kind of a carte blanche. These same individuals just get recommended every term without any kind of a process for some, you know, fresh blood. So I think from that perspective, I'll be denying it as well.
Okay, differences of opinion are good. Any other further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. We will move on to general services. We have Resolution Number 15-002, Authorization of Donation of Six Panasonic Toughbooks to the Postfall School District, Number 273. Do we have a general services person to talk about that? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, this was presented by Chief White, who is at the podium. These toughbooks, you know, get kind of beat up and out of date pretty quickly. Always try and find a use for them. There's really no value to them. So Chief White will probably reiterate this, but they, you know, clean out the hard drives and make sure there's some kind of a regulation, I believe, from the federal level that they go through to make sure there's no information left on those, and found a home for them where they can continue to get a little life.
Okay. Chief White, if you had some more information?
New mayor and council. Actually, I think Councilmember Adams summed it up perfectly. We've got a bunch of laptops that have reached the end of their useful life. The hard drives have been wiped. They are worth basically nothing. There's no city departments that have a use for them. We've checked with the Coeur d'Alene School District. They do not have a use for them. However, the robotics team for the Postfall School District does. And so what I'm requesting is authorization to donate six Panasonic Toughbook laptops to the Postfall School District, Number 273's robotics team program.
Any other questions? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval of Resolution Number 15-002, Authorization of Donation of the Toughbooks.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Edinger? Sorry. Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Steve, you want to take the next one?
All right.
Chief's going back going, "God, I hope the Go-Bond works as well as this."
This one, Mr. Mayor, was presented by Renata for a new cellphone allowance to upgrade to smartphones for those city employees that are now using both their city-provided regular phone and their smartphone, primarily their own personal smartphones. So we're just, we've moved into the age of smartphones and just no way around it. Verizon, I believe, has given the city, as I said, it, general services a killer deal. I wondered if it would be available to council members as well. I wouldn't take it, but I was thinking of the other members that probably could save some money. Just joking. But I think Renata will give more information on that. So again, just being able to upgrade to smartphones for those employees that'll need them.
I have a really quick presentation I'll run through just so we catch all the details. This is actually a new policy for city employees and staff. So currently, the city cellphone plan is managed through Municipal Services Department. That's my department. So when there are problems with the phones, the batteries go dead, the service is interrupted, my staff has to deal with that for the entire city departments. Currently, the city only authorizes general, basic phones for city staff. So we're talking the old flip phone. We've never authorized smartphones because we didn't really have the funding for the data packages. So staff that's out in the field does not have access to text messaging or ability to take photographs and send in code violations or anything like that at this time. So some of the positions, as I noted, you know, those that are out in the field, inspectors, would certainly benefit from a smartphone. Currently, the city only issues them to those employees that is applicable to their job duties, and we would continue to do so. So the proposal really is to allow the department heads to determine which staff would maybe move to a stipend program. So those that maybe already have their own personal cellphone. We wouldn't have to monitor the personal use on city cellphones anymore. My department wouldn't have to deal with the broken phones. We wouldn't have to deal with the cost of replacing broken cellphones, especially the more expensive smartphones. So it really became sort of a cost wash with what we budget for city cellphones versus what we would allow on these stipend programs. So the program that we're proposing is one that we just kind of mimicked from the city of Postfalls. They're already doing this, so we took their policy and kind of interpreted it our way. There'd be three levels of reimbursement available, and that would all be determined by the department head. The benefits, as I said before, would allow my staff to not deal with as much troubleshooting. We wouldn't have to pay for new broken phones when somebody drops it in a wastewater clarifier or anything fun like that. And many of the city employees are already forwarding the city phone to their personal cellphones, so they don't have to carry two phones. So it'd certainly be a benefit to them. Benefit to the city. We'd have employees out there that would have the efficiency to be able to check their emails, text message, or send in those photographs for code violations, et cetera. So really, this is a breakdown. Right now, the city plan allows each city cellphone to have 200 minutes. Those get pooled by the department. So if somebody goes over 200 minutes, but somebody goes unders, it's just like a family plan, so to say, but it's by department. So the stipend would be just solely, the amount that we're currently paying for your city phone would be allowable for that reimbursement for the stipend. There's another option that now Verizon has come forward with, and this is what I think Councilman Adams was talking about, for the city smartphones. So those departments, like the police department, where we can't block the numbers of the investigators making phone calls, they certainly wouldn't want their personal phone numbers out there. So we now have this new option for city smartphones for those particular departments. And again, that is definitely something a department head would have to analyze and determine whether was applicable for that job. But that would be $49.99 a month for 400 minutes and unlimited text and data. So they have several smartphone options available for free, or 99 cents. So it's really not the old flip phone. There's even an iPhone 5 available through that program. So really, we are not asking for any additional budget for that. Each department would be responsible to live within their own budget, and it would be no more cost than what we would be paying for a city-issued cellphone. So any further questions?
Questions for Renata? Dan?
Mr. Mayor, while Renata makes her way back to her desk in an expedient manner, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 15003, approving a cellphone allowance policy.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public Works, who's the Public Works guy?
We brought this forward because Dan had a problem with how we were paying for it.
It's called a conniption.
A conniption.
Yeah.
So take it away, Dan.
Okay. Hi. Actually, so we had last August, was August or September?
September.
September, we had two of our street sweepers burn, for whatever reason. And this is too late in the year, of course, to budget for a new one. And we know, I've sat with Mr. Martin many times in his office and said, "How can we get more street sweepers?" I mean, the two big issues I have from people, they talk to me about the city, is I haven't seen a cop car in months. And I've talked to the chief about that. We're working on it. And I haven't seen a street sweeper. So I've been talking to Tim, "What can we do to sweep our streets more often?" And then these things burn, and now we have an opportunity to obtain two more. You may take it away, sir.
Yes, it seems quite odd, and thank you, Mayor and council members, tonight, but to be talking sweepers in the winter. But as Councilmember Gookin had mentioned, the untimely fire back in September. We had a very healthy conversation in Public Works. I think it was very good. And bringing it forward tonight to talk about the authorization to go out to bid for two sweepers. As you're aware, we had a fire out at the Street Barn Shop on Ramsey Road. Fire had looked at it. I-Crimp did some investigation. We believe it started in and around the batteries, and went up both those two sweepers in 19, I believe one was in 1998, and the other one was in 2005. And we went through the process with our new insurance company, and we got fair market value for both of them, and it was at $88,000, right in that area. These sweepers, looking with manufacturers and talking to sales members out there, looking at piggybacks, which is you can go off another bid within the state to try to expedite this process. We're looking right around $206,000 apiece for these sweepers. Currently, the department has one sweeper available. We used that during leaf pickup. And we borrowed one from one of the highway districts, and we also rented one at $2,000 a week, plus parts, to clean the town during leaf pickup this year. Going into this, the regenerative air sweepers, which those both are, is the way to go. And there's no piggybacks out there in the state of Idaho that we can go off. So we have to go out to bid for these processes. Currently, the one we have is a 19, or 2007, excuse me, I'm stuck in the 1900s tonight. But 2007, it currently has almost 7,000 hours on it. And if you can imagine sandblasting your car for 7,000 hours, there is just no resale value in these. And our discussion was looking at them like the loaders or the Grader that we just rented or leased the buy option. There's no value in these at the end. I mean, they're scrap metal, and that's what they are. So the two that burned, the one had almost 11,800 hours on it, and the other one, the newer one, had 5,202. We looked at different options. Staff got together to see how we could move forward on this. What was our best options? And the recommendation coming out of staff was for the drainage utility to purchase one of these. The utilities, one of its most focal, central focuses is the preservation of water quality in the Coeur d'Alene Lake and Spokane River system. You've heard many times from Sid talk about the phosphorus levels that he's had hit. Almost half our town is in the hard pipe system, which dumps directly into that river and into the lake. And concerted sweeping effort is key to the best management practices of keeping those loads out of the lake and the river. So one was to have the utility purchase one. We would provide all the maintenance on those, so we weren't stuck in that legal issue that, you know, the utilities loaning it to the general fund. But we would, the general fund would provide all maintenance costs on it, and we would still charge the utility to run it, just like we have in the last several years. The utility right now pays for two sweeps a year, basically, you know, early spring and the late fall. The other sweeper, we are proposing to take the $88,000 that we got back and then go into the fund balance to take care of this. It's not considered an emergency, you know, like St. Helen's blowing up. You can just go out there. And we looked at grants, and it's a process. Was not able to find any grants moving forward this year. And the last grant we did was actually one of those sweepers. And it took almost two years to get through the process. Just felt we didn't have time at this time. So that's why I'm here tonight. And Troy would be happy to talk to you about the financial end of it. But if you have any questions.
Any questions for Tim? Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to comment. One of the reasons that my eyes popped out of my head, two reasons. So first was, this isn't in the budget. And the second is, you know, you're using the word fund balance. And so I was like, "Well, where are other options? What else can we do besides this one method to fund it?" And I remember Kiki wanted to talk about leases, and I'm glad we had that discussion. So we know, you know, how expensive a lease would be. And I think you do a good job explaining how well, you know, it is, I mean, you don't rent these things. Basically, you buy them, and the company that makes them knows that. So we're over a barrel. But I got to differ with you. I do think this is kind of an emergency. I mean, it was completely unplanned for. These things burned down. I mean, if your car burned down somewhere, it still would be an emergency. So I think, you know, going into the fund balance for this, our rainy day fund, to me, that's worth it because not only, you know, do we have to do the street maintenance, but there's the issue with air quality. There's an issue with things that go into the lake and the river that's important for us to maintain. I think Sid made some great comments at our meeting regarding the impact that the leaves themselves actually have, just sitting on the street and the water going through the leaves into the drainage system, and how much that makes his life miserable. So I think this is definitely worth it. I would encourage you to consider looking at those grants and other options. I would think having a fourth one would... I would think having a, a fourth one would be good. If we can find a person to drive it, that would be better. So, thank you.
And I will say that we, we did go through this back and forth pretty thoroughly, I think the notes reflect that, and that the costs increasing on these, they're not gonna go, go down. There isn't a place to lease them, there aren't any other places to rent them, and so this is a situation where I think staff did the due diligence to look at all the options, whether they were all presented or not. It is just something that, that we're kind of, the one question that I was wondering, came to me later, is the insurance company paid us a, us a, a fair market value based on this product? Is there a different look that should be taken at the insurance coverage that we have on these types of specialty items, or is that something that we can bring up in a workshop situation? Or was that already?
I, Troy could maybe speak to that, but I could tell you, I, I worked with their person representative, he had a hard time even finding a 1998 to even look at value. So, it, it was a real challenge for them to come up with dollars and what made sense, but as far as the insurance itself, I'm not very familiar with that, and...
Thank you. Yes, the insurance company, ICrimp, was a package. You do not have any choices on what it is you get to do, so it is replacement value, it's not full new actual value for it. So, that is, you remember how many choices we gave you?
One, one choice, and there you have it. Okay. Just wanna make sure, thank you.
I had a question for either Tim or Troy. In our capital plan, in our future capital plan, did, did we have a sweeper in, you know, our, our five-year capital plan?
There is, there was one in there, yes. I think it was two or three years out still, and that always kind of moves to the department needs, but is there to give council, you know, a real vision of where the department heads are looking, that, what they need most.
And that capital plan was to replace the 1997 or 1998 one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other question? Steve? Just one quick question. Troy, I know that there's still a little bit of money left in our self-insurance fund. Is, was that considered as an option for helping out with these a little bit, or?
That could be an option, although we still have pending claims that could come to the city during that interim period where we are still self-funded.
Right.
The good news to counter that point would be the fact that your department heads and through your stewardship, you grew your fund balance last year. We had brought that to you as we forecasted it, but we are actually up year-over-year in fund balance. We're at a $6,710,632 approximately, and in so doing, that's pushing 20.4% of your general fund expenses. According to the Government Finance Officers Association, 15% is an acceptable point, and the good news there is, is that we come forward that we have the cash for this unforeseen expense, and combine that with the fact that we're looking at a general obligation bond, which the underwriters will heavily look at, your cash on hand to help you as stewards of our citizens' dollars in emergencies.
Any other questions for Tim or for Troy? Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion on this?
I would move to approve, staff proceed with the bid for two replacement sweepers.
Second?
Motion and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Motion carried. We will move on to other business, the GO bond for public safety. We have a trio of presenters tonight, and it looks like that Troy is gonna be our lead off.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We bring forward to you tonight a number of chiefs and myself to share with you a plan that was hatched 10 years ago. We thank you for being elected, and Happy New Year to all of you. We've worked with your administrator, Jim Hammond, on this. You will hear from Chief Gabriel and Chief White in just a moment. Let me share with you, we are proposing to you tonight a general obligation bond. This is basically a loan that we would like to get with our voters approving it. It takes 66 and 2/3 approval from our voters here in the city of Coeur d'Alene. So, the voters would tax themselves to make the payment, the bond holders, the ones that would receive this money, like that, thus your interest rates are very attractive because property taxpayers pay their property taxes. That's the funding mechanism. We are proposing to you the 2015 Public Safety GO, we've shortened it down to GO for General Obligation Bond. This one would replace the 2005 Public Safety Bond that our voters approved just 10 years ago. Levy rate, what is the levy rate? The levy rate is the property tax cost per $1,000 in valuation. What we are proposing for you tonight is a general obligation bond that will be less in levy rate than it was 10 years ago. Hard to believe, but 10 years ago, interest rates were higher than they are today. And we are proposing a general obligation bond with your approval that is $1 million less than it was 10 years ago. So, we are proposing a $6 million bond, 10 years ago, it was $7 million. We are anticipating an interest rate, again, that's a risky business, but it is less as we look at our crystal ball when this comes to fruition, should you approve it, should the voters approve it, at less than 3% interest, and we are proposing it goes 10 years. 10 years would be the length of the bond, that is the length of the assets that you will be hearing about from your chiefs. Therefore, I can tell you that based on that, the levy rate for this portion of property taxes would go down. What does that really mean? That means that if you had a $200,000 tax-assessed property with the bond going forward at $6 million, you would spend $10 per year less. That's a $200,000 property. Let's talk about what is closer to a residential home. The median price of a home, as per the most recent update that I could find from our realtors, is a median purchase price of $192,500. In the state of Idaho, if you are owner-occupied, living in your house, you receive a homeowner's exemption. That homeowner's exemption is up over last year. So, in this situation, the value of your house plus up to one acre, if it is not greater than $89,580, that is the maximum homeowner's exemption. So, your net taxable amount for that median-priced home would be $102,920, based on some calculations. Right now, you would be paying $28.65 per year for this general obligation bond that is ending. Going forward, it'd be, would be less, $5.20 on an annual basis. Let's talk about details on this bond. Mayor and council, good evening. As Troy mentioned, this night is 11 years in the making, and it's with great pride and enthusiasm that I come to you tonight, because this is kind of a stepping stone to our future. And as Troy said, we sat down in a room about 11 years ago and tried to come up with ways that we could ease the burden on the general fund, because those big red fire trucks you see are very expensive. And 11 years ago, we looked at some needs of ours, and they were facilities that were segregated, we needed to upgrade them, our capital expenses most definitely had to be taken care of, and our biggest issue, and always is, is folks. The most expensive and ongoing thing we have is how do we pay for the people to put in seats of those fire trucks? So, we devised a plan, and we sat down with the citizens' group, and we looked at the needs. In 2005, the big thing was how do we meet the commitment to our community? Well, the first things we did was build a new training facility, and when we talked to council in the community back then, it was very important that we make this a regional facility that was a joint police and fire training facility. And I can tell you, its success is greater than I thought it was. What we had hoped would happen was we would have regional training academies there, we do. We would share this with the police department and the area police agencies, we do. We would have the surrounding agencies, who don't have the ability to train in these facilities, to come in, and they have. And this facility's been a great success. We talked about the folks. Troy had a great plan back then to pay off Fire Station 3 and the police station at that time, use those funds that were being paid out to pay that debt service and use that to hire firefighters, and I will say that has been one of the greatest things we've done, because we eliminated what we call two-person engine companies. Now, we have three people on every piece of equipment. Upgrades to Station 1 and Station 2, they were still in strategic places for where we needed our responses, so from that bond, we paid for upgrades that will make those stations viable for years to come. Capital equipment purchased, again, like we said, those fire trucks are very expensive, and what we didn't want to do was put capital towards the general fund and take away from the general fund, because our hope has always been to raise the amount of our force. And the one thing that we were talking about that was made very clear to us back then was you have to do this on time, you have to do this on budget, and you have to meet that commitment to our community. All part of strategic planning. We need to look at how we provide services in our community, and we do that on an ongoing basis. The general obligation plan is part one of a four-part plan to improve how we do those services. Without the general obligation bond, we would have to come to mayor and council and ask for you for funds to purchase fire trucks. They're very expensive, about $550,000, $560,000 per piece of equipment, with a ladder truck being about $1.4 million. If we had to come to you with that, our thoughts of ever opening a fourth fire, fire station would perish. So, what we did years ago is we start looking at that, knowing that we did the general obligation bond five years ago, or 10 years ago, we were gonna do it again. We're here to you today to be part of that plan. Also, back then, land acquisition. We knew that we were gonna grow to the west part of our city, we did, and through some forethought, we did get land to build Station 4 at the northwest part of the city. Impact fees for building construction. 10 years ago, we went around to North Idaho building contractors, a whole, the realtors, and said, "We have to relook at how we do our impact fee schedule." We did, so it's more in line with our true needs. We did that, we now have close to $900,000 in impact fees, that's what we will use to build Fire Station 4, again, not coming to the general fund. And the fourth, like we talked about, staffing. Always my priority to look at creative ways to come to you with options on what we can do with staffing. Now, we've been lucky, and there are some ways that we think there are some funds, but my pledge to you is to work with the administrator, the finance director, and come to council with ideas on how we can staff those nine folks for Fire Station 4. So, what's your fire department look like today? 10 years ago, we had fire stations that needed repair, we didn't have training facilities, we had those pieces of equipment that were literally held together with duct tape and baling wire, and I'm not really kidding. But what are we doing today? Well, 2014, we had a record number of calls, nearly 8,000 calls for service. When I say we had a call for services, all of our calls are 911 calls, so all of our calls are emergent and they need immediate response. Nearly 8,000 calls, up from 7,100 calls the year before, a huge leap for us. You know, in any great organization, you're not nearly as good as your folks. I can tell you that the folks in the fire department are spectacular. We've had four Medal of Honor winners that have been presented by the governor to four of our folks for heroism above and beyond the call of duty. We've been numerous times EMS Crew of the Month, which isn't picked by us, but by the Kootenay County Emergency Medical Services System, that pick our folks for the superior work that they do. One that I'm very proud of is we always talk about customer service is so important to the fire department, we have been recognized by the Chamber of Commerce for customer service. We've been recognized by Head Start for what we do with the kids in our community, and we've had numerous life safety awards in the last 10 years, which means no fire deaths in the, in the city and the accompanying prevention programs that go with those zero fire deaths. So, what are we gonna ask you for? You saw what we did last time, this time is pretty much everything with tires. Our fleet is very old, the national standards say 10 years for fire engines, 15 years for ladder trucks, we're exceeding all of those right now. So, we're gonna ask you for three fire engines, two of them will replace the current engines we have, and we do have a new one in there with the anticipation of opening Station 4. The ladder truck, like I say, $1.4 million, our fire boat, we're gonna replace the 1986 brush truck that we have with a smaller one, that'll be easier to get around Tubbs Hill and maneuver in the forest, much easier than we have. And then our inspectors vehicles, battalion chief vehicle, command vehicles, and utility trucks, those are all rigs that are in our 10-year replacement plan that we wanted, that we would have to come to you for capital, that we want to include in this as well. Also, we, we have is our self-conveying breathing apparatus, the air tanks we put on our backs. We kind of are held hostage at times by the manufacturers. What they did last time is they said, "We no longer make parts for your apparatus," so we're out of luck. If that happens again, we want to have the money in there in place for that. And then what we did in the last bond, we like to do again, is do a complete hose replacement within the department. Another big part of what we're asking you for, and this is with Chief White and the police department, is out behind Station 2, we desperately need storage space, we have pieces of equipment that are, you know, the cost of a Porsche, that sit outside in the weather, and we need to have them available for emergency response, but they're covered with snow, they sit out in the weather, that's not how we want to do business, that's not we want, how we want to take care of assets that you've allowed us to get. So, we are asking for $500,000 to have a shared facility with the police department and the fire department.
Kenny?
Yes.
You have land for, there's enough space there for that?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
What do you expect would be the size of that building? Would that be like an open, uh, pull horn?
Actually, it's for, it'll be offices for the police department, we're just gonna have garages. It's actually 10 bays, 10 double bays, so it's, do you remember the size of it, chief? I apologize, I don't have that, I can get it to you, it's big.
Okay.
It takes pretty much that whole end of, the back end of our, that out there by the shopping station, too. And I'll get you the exact dimensions. So, what's the fire service do today? It amazes me that I started this 30 years ago, and back then, we pretty much did fires, and that's all we responded to. Today, that is completely opposite. We are an all-hazard fire department, one of the biggest things we do is the community emergency medical response. We have paramedics that respond, and ambulances, and fire trucks, and we, we respond in the city and out of the city with care that is second to none. Our Fire Prevention Bureau does an incredible job, we're one of the few companies that actually try to put themselves out of business. We do that through fire prevention and public education, we talk to our at-risk folks, we do everything we can to educate folks and to do what we can to make the community safe in buildings and make it safe for our firefighters. You know, one thing I've heard the council talk about many times is collaboration and partnerships. One of them we're very proud of is what we do with North Idaho College. We teach and administer the Firefighter 1 program for students and the EMT program, and why we did that is we got tired of seeing the kids in our community have to leave to get the education and be firefighters, we want them to stay here. We've had great success with that, we've so far, we've had four folks get hired in North Idaho from our academies. We also do the first aid and CPR classes through North Idaho College. One thing you heard me talk about many times is how proud I am of our urban search and rescue team, funded by the state, one of three state teams, well over a million dollars in assets, not paid for out of the general fund. But that is trench rescue, what we call high-angle rescue, a number of things that those folks can do that we would not have the ability to do without this team. We also have a canine team, you heard, you know, the police department has their dogs, we do, too. Captain Sales and his dog were at the disaster in Oso for 10 days, and we, we are part of a national team for our canine team. And now, something we're real proud of is we work with our police department, as we do with just about everything, and we now are part of the SWAT team, where our medics are right there in case something was to happen to an officer, we are right by their sides to get aid to those officers immediately. And that's a new program. And water rescue, you know, we have 12 miles of lake, and one of the things we want to be good at is what are we gonna do if something happens in that lake? We have to be well versed in that, as well as ice rescue as well. So, we're all trained in that. So, why do I come to you now to replace these? Like I, like I told you before, national standards, 10 years for fire engines, 15 years for ladder trucks, we're over that right now, but we knew we would be, so it's part of a plan. Maintenance costs are increasing, thank goodness for our shop, I don't know what we do without the mechanics out there, they keep everything running, but they find it more and more difficult to find parts for some of the older rigs we have. You know, one engine we run still is a 1986, 1986 Mack. We use that for a last resort, but we've used it many times this year. So, the, you know, the shop helps us with that. Another thing with the shop talks about is not so much miles, but hours. Our ladder truck has 13,000 miles on it, most fire ladder trucks are replaced at 8,000 hours. 10 to 15 replacement plan is something we've had for 10 years, 8,000 calls. A fire truck's life is going from sitting still and turned off to, to the floor in fast auto when they get there, they get run very hard. And we did have that record year by nearly 800 runs last year. Part of everything we do is time-related, and we talked a bit about how important it is and where we have to have our next is and where we have to have our next fire station. You know, Vision 2030 talks about a safe, healthy community. One of the things we need to do is get there in a hurry. And from Station Two right now, and that is actually the landings, to get to the landings area off of Prairie, we're at about nine minutes. Counsel, our goal is to get to 90% of the calls in the city are four minutes or less. We are, it takes us quite a while to get there. And then also, if we do the same thing to Mill River, we're still at about 10 minutes. If we fill that gap and put that fire station on the north part, or the west part of the city, we're going to drastically cut those response times. As you can see in the purple, that is Station Two's response area. And they have, they're almost double all the other districts. We need to cut that in half. And I'm not here to talk to you about that. We're going to work with you through strategic planning to bring this, but know that the bond is an integral part of getting Station Four.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I like the fire department. The police department's busier than ever. And we've identified several equipment items that we need to meet our needs of our constituents. I'm sorry, I'm a little fast there. I'll go through each of these in a little bit more detail. The first item is a command vehicle. The police department currently handles over 20 special events annually and over 60 investigative call-outs. Now, not all of those require the, you know, the need of an area for the investigators and command staff and different departments to get together and run the events, but a lot of them do. This would be used for any large event, for additional visibility, increase our presence in special events and other events the police department's doing. The second item that we have in front of you is a public safety camera network. Cameras are installed currently in a number of locations. The idea with this bond is to replace some of those cameras and then add them in additional city facilities. It's important to know that this doesn't include active monitoring. We don't have the personnel to sit and watch it. However, there is a deterrent, and there's also an investigative component to this that we can use after the fact if something were to occur. The next item on our list, vehicles. Much like the fire department, we have a huge number of vehicles that have reached, well, they're well beyond the end of their service life. We've got 17 vehicles with over 100,000 miles on them. Additionally, we have a total of 20 vehicles that are over 10 years old, which meets the requirement of the GO bond. Much like the fire department, we've got a large amount of electronic equipment in our police department, vehicles. And when a patrol car is working throughout the shift, it's required to stay idling just to keep the computers and things of that nature running. Otherwise, the officer has to get in their car and turn it on and, you know, restart the computer equipment. That takes a little bit of time slowing our response. So currently, a lot of our patrol vehicles, for instance, they idle throughout their shift. Despite the fact that we've got 20 vehicles that are over 10 years old and 17 vehicles with over 100,000 miles, we're replacing, requesting replacement of just seven of those vehicles. And the last item on the list goes towards the vehicle concern that I just spoke about. Having an area where, a covered parking area where there is electricity that the patrol vehicles can be plugged into to maintain the computer equipment should reduce some of the idle time for the patrol vehicles. It should reduce maintenance costs because it's not just the miles, it's also the hours, as Chief Gabriel talked about, on our cars. And reducing those idle hours should reduce the maintenance costs on our vehicles. And that's the last item that I have for you.
That facility we're proposing for storage and for personnel from the police department is a 60 by 140-foot building. It's about 8,400 square feet, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Troy.
In summation, Mayor and Council, we have a 2015 public safety bond that is designed to be part of an action plan that your community is bringing to the voters so that we can take care of those capital needs. It worked very well in 2005. The vote for this would be May 19th of 2015. That has been advertised in the legal section of your newspaper, as we have been looking at this since we started it over 11 years ago. I just can't say enough good news, that the economy does feel better. Interest rates are better than they were 10 years ago. So from the finance officer's desk, this is a prime time to be taking out to our voters a plan that has worked, that has worked in other communities, and we believe it's worked for the past 10 years. So again, we're proposing $1 million less than what we did 10 years ago, interest rate less, same term. Thus, the levy rate for this portion of one's property taxes in the city of Coeur d'Alene would go down. We stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Chief Gabriel, Chief White, or for Troy?
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm with both the chiefs that the automobiles that we are buying with a 10-year bond will be lasting at least 10 years.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, good. And chief, fireboat, maybe you could talk a little bit about the fireboat and how we can use that in our city and what, why it would be beneficial?
It's a great question. We've been asked that many times. We have 12 miles of shoreline. We have a number of million-dollar homes and high-rises on the waterfront. We have 1,000 slips within our jurisdiction. We have three cruise boats that can put 600 people on them at a time. And we have the busiest boat launch in the state at Third Street. And all of those are, I don't want to say recipes for disaster, but they absolutely are concern items for your fire chief. Tubbs Hill, you know, the jewel of our community, anything on the far side of Tubbs Hill you have to hike to, fireboats can get them from the water side. Another thing that's very important to me that we don't think about a lot is what do we do with risk management for an earthquake? We have a water source if there's fires on that side of town. They've used it in other cities before. We are lucky because we do have an agreement with Cootney Fire right now, and we have used their boat in the past. We do have another boat that's fairly close on the lake, but that's over in Micah Bay. The volunteer fire department, it takes them quite a while to get here. And the Cootney Fire Boat, it is at Blackwell Island, but some of the problems we have is we have no control of where it goes. We have no control of when it comes out of the water. And it is a boat that does not fit our needs. The boat we're looking for right now is more of a landing-style, a landing craft-style boat. So if there was a problem with one of the cruise boats, and we did have to do a rescue on a boat or somebody in the water, the front actually comes down, and they can come right. So we're looking at a new boat that will absolutely meet the needs of our community. Does that help, sir?
Absolutely.
Other questions? Woody?
So what we're doing tonight is we're just okaying that this will go on the ballot.
Yes.
So I understand that, right. And then you guys do your job to sell it.
Correct, sir.
You'll be out there in the community schools and talking about what you guys do and why this is important.
Yes.
Other questions?
I did have something I wanted to bring up with the chief, because we discussed this.
Which chief?
You chief. You're the chief, the current chief, who is standing, not the chief in the back. Too many chiefs. So the fireboat is currently docked at 11th Street.
Correct.
Would it be more beneficial for us to put it at Third?
It would.
What can we do as a council to help you make that happen?
Well, we have to come up with a way to extend those docks out. And the one thing with the new boat, what's important to me to keep it in the water for 12 months, which we want to do, is a secure boathouse. And we've talked to Bill Greenwood, and we talked to Doug Eastwood about this before, about when they extend and put more slips out there, the possibility of getting a boathouse out there. And that would be ideal for us because we talked about the marina, Tubbs Hill, the boats. They all come right there. So that would be an ideal for us to put that piece of equipment.
Okay. So would we need to do like a direction for you guys to come back with a proposal to us? Would that be something?
That's at the will of the council. We will do whatever you direct us to do.
Is that the way it would work, Renata?
Well, tonight, you could make a motion for staff to bring back additional information for you to make a motion at that time.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion to have staff report back to council with additional information on what it would take to have a fireboat, our current fireboat, because this one hasn't happened yet, be docked at Third Street.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that?
And again, I just want to tell council this is just for them to bring back something for us to talk about, the pluses and the minuses, where the money's going to come from, all that stuff.
We can do that.
Thank you.
But, excuse me, but it doesn't hinder or affect the bond?
This would be completely separate from the bond, but the idea, I've been talking with the chief, I think that it would be better if we, you know, we have an existing boat, and they do use it, and they've used it a couple of times this past year. So it's something that we are using. But it would be more effective for them, and I think better access, better positioning to put it on Third than it is on 11th. And they'll bring us that information and hopefully justify why the move is necessary and how to pay for it.
And so you're thinking it would come out of the GO bond?
No, 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 no. No, not, this would, this has not altered the GO bond at all. This is something that would be separate. The GO bond is not, this is not voting on the GO bond right now. This is on the, just for them to come back and talk about moving a boathouse.
I was just, I just wanted to comment that I think that this is important, and it sure feels like good news when you can get a value for less money per year. It just, that seems like a good news bottom line. I hope that, one of the things we talked about that you brought to council before was the nature of the growth in the community and the type of fire equipment to deal with high-rises and, you know, more people per square foot and where they're going. So I hope that this bond has addressed all of those things so that in the next 10 years, we are able to satisfy the security of those folks as well.
It's part of the plan. Yes, counsel.
So we do have a motion and a second to instruct staff to come back with a plan on a possible boathouse at Third Street. So a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, to approve staff to proceed with the public safety GO bond as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, is the school district's request for their levy, is that going to be the same date?
There in March.
There in March. Okay. Is there anything else on the ballot with this that you guys know of?
Councilmember, we do not anticipate that at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? I just wanted to add that in our, in our vision statement, part of it says, "A safe city," and it says, "Through excellence in government." And I think we all acknowledge that we have excellent staff, excellent public safety employees, and it is our job and our task to make sure that they're equipped properly. And I applaud Chief Gabriel and Chief White. They've put a lot of time, a lot of effort into putting this together so we can provide them with the tools that they need. And so I applaud you for all the efforts that you've put into that.
Second.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second. And then roll call, please.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. We have a legislative hearing, V-14-7, vacation of the undeveloped alley adjoining lots 1 through 8, Secor subdivision of Track 6, Costello acre tracks. We have a staff report by our city engineer, Gordon Dohler.
Thank you.
Looks like it's written comment.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The item before you tonight, the first vacation item, is fairly straightforward. It's a request to vacate an unused portion of an alley between 15th and 16th Street, south of Garden. I passed out a written comment that we'll get to in a minute, but the alley was platted back in 1927, I believe, and subsequent plant south of that did not provide for the extension of that alley. So it simply goes to nowhere. It's a dead end. It's never been used for any water or sewer utilities. It only has an Avista power line in it. And should you elect to vacate the alley, we, of course, would retain an easement for that Avista power, as we always do. There's really not many more specifics. There is a, in your staff report, schematic of the alley showing its location, roughly its length. Really, that's the nuts and bolts of the staff report for you. We did send out mailings, of course. We sent out 38 certified mailings. We received five responses. Four were neutral, and one was against with a comment, and I've handed that comment out to you for your reading pleasure.
Okay, any questions for Gordon?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gordon, I'm reading the comment, and I'm, I'm wondering if she misunderstands what's going on here. I think we're just kind of giving up an alley. We're not adding an alley.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I would agree.
Any other questions for Gordon? Okay, this being a legislative hearing, we have open public speaking or public comment on this. I have a list here with no one's name on it. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to say anything on this matter? None seen. I will close the public comment portion of that and ask for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve V-14-7 vacation of the undeveloped alley adjoining lots 1 through 8, Secor's subdivision of Track 6, Costello acre tracks.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None seen. Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving, move into executive session. Oh my goodness. Under Code 67234, to conduct deliberations concerning labor negotiations or to acquire interest in real property, which is not owned by a public agency, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of a legal, of legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet litigated but imminently likely to be litigated.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Of course.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Okay.